Welcome to Unite Oregon City's 2021 School Board Elections Question and Answer Series. We reached out to all 10 candidates and asked if they would participate in this series. Out of the 10 candidates, only six participated. There are two videos to watch. One video has the two candidates for position one, and one of the two candidates for position three. The other video has two of the four candidates for position six, and one of the two candidates for position four. Links to all 10 candidates, Facebook pages, or webpages can be found in the comment section below. Now don't forget to follow us on Facebook and subscribe to our YouTube channel. Thank you for watching.
Please briefly introduce yourself. How long have you lived in Oregon City and how have you been involved in Oregon City schools?
My name is Martha Spires. I'm currently the Chair of the Oregon City School Board. I've been the Chair through COVID, and I'm running for reelection for position one. My family and I moved to Oregon City in 2006 when our youngest daughter was one year old. My wife and I both worked for Clackamas County and had been living in Northeast Portland. We moved here because we thought it was important to live in the community where we worked, and also because we didn't want to leave our baby in childcare in Portland while we were both in Oregon City. We felt that was too far away if something happened. Also, my job had me working part-time in disaster management, and I knew only too well how many bridges there were between Oregon City and Northeast Portland, and that was a little scary. So, our daughter went to Beaver Creek Elementary, Ogden Middle, and is now a high school freshman finishing up that year. Up until this past year, she's had a great experience in the school system. Don't get me wrong, I believe that teachers and the district have done a great job managing the various disasters that this year brought. They couldn't have done any better or worked with any more heart, in my opinion. It's just that, while I recognize that it has been a necessary compromise, distance learning has been hard on her, as it has been on almost everyone, I think. When our daughter was at Beaver Creek, I thought I would join the PTO. I dipped my toe in. My wife is Jewish and biracial, and our daughter is also mixed race. As you have gathered by now, we're a same-sex family. The PTO group wasn't unfriendly. It was just that the group of mothers involved assumed that we were all the same, and I felt isolated and not very safe being myself in that group. It was very homogeneous. I don't think they meant any harm. They just didn't see how hard it was for someone to be different in that context. They didn't understand how important it is to make an extra effort around inclusion. After that, I stuck to bringing in food for teachers on teacher conference days, and later running for school board. Our daughter has been a dancer since she was four, and she dances with Mary Lee's Dance Studio in Oregon City. That's a shameless plug for them. Because she has some physical challenges, she has some skeletal, a mild skeletal disability, congenital disability, that prevents her from walking too far or from running. Our family has not been a competitive sports family, but Mary Lee's has been welcoming to us and has become like a second family for our daughter. The other dancers and teachers are critical to her mental health, and so I do understand why sports are so important to many families.
I have been in Oregon City for 31 years. However, I grew up my entire childhood in Beaver Creek, so I was just across the border. I started volunteering when my oldest started school at John McLaughlin back in 1996. I was very well-known at John McLaughlin as my childcare grew and all my clientele came from the teachers. By the time all five of our children went through the school district, I've gone through John McLaughlin, Gardner, and Oregon City High School. So we've spent 25 years of dedicating myself to help whatever programs, sport, or need within this district.
Well, hello. My name is Jason Chemrick, and I'm running for Oregon City School Board, position three. My family's lived in Oregon City for almost nine years now. Primarily, I'm running as I have two young children in Oregon City School District, attending Jenny's Lodge and Candy Lane. I believe that my 27 years of public service has shaped me into an approachable listener. I've spent the majority of my professional career developing, mentoring, and teaching young adults health and safety as they enter the workforce. All of this, along with volunteer coaching, makes the school board position feel like a wonderful next step to use my skills and serve our community.
Moving to our second question. Looking beyond the obvious return to school post-pandemic, what are the most important issues the Oregon City schools are facing, and what creative ways do you have to address them?
For me right now, the most important thing beyond returning to school will be evaluating the damage that we will see arise from the online learning, the isolation, the social anxiety, and the mental health. I firmly believe we won't see the damages for a few years post-returning to a normal. I do not like to use the word resilient. Children are flexible, but we cannot ignore the fact that we have removed everything normal from them. They see fear and they see uncertainty. The children in our district also had a massive wildfire in which to evacuate from, and an insane freezing rain event that left us without power and widespread damages. If we will need to find creative ways for these children to express their fears and their experiences, we have to find a way to validate their experience and find common ground to show them that we are with them each and every step of the way as we walk back to what our new normal shall be. But we must take these steps together to bring them through. This is tremendously stressful. This time in their lives, we can give them art, open discussion, and use dramatic play. Our excellent starting points, but we have to all be on the same page to bring these kids through this with as minimal damage as possible.
Safety for students and staff is the top of my mind. From social injustices such as racism, bullying, and lack of diversity, to facility considerations like security and gender-inclusive options, I plan to make decisions with a lens of equity always. I want all students and staff to feel considered, respected, and safe. A student can't learn if they don't feel safe. During this school year, I've gotten to listen in to my son's third grade classes, and I'm completely impressed with the frequency students are asked to talk about how they are feeling and support they get in return from their fellow students. This holistic approach to the students' wellbeing not only helps the students sharing, but helps the others to practice empathy, increasing their ability to cope with stressful situations, and ultimately reducing bullying and violence. All for making a habit of open dialogue regarding their feelings. We need more of this, more lessons, more practices as they get older, and more habitual kindness. Our society is as healthy as its population, and the population is made up of one person at a time. Normalizing feelings is a fantastic start.
Well, a couple of things spring to mind with that question. I think the growing diversity in our community is one thing, but there's a question about that later, so I'll go down that route a little bit later. Everything that I'm going to say next is interrelated, and I don't have a lot of answers, but I do have some concerns. The answers are going to have to come from our community, I think. I don't think we're doing enough to prepare for the increasing number of weather events, extreme weather events that are building with climate change. We aren't really talking about this is something we plan, we have to plan for as a community. Our ideological differences hamper these discussions. This in itself is a diversity issue, our ideological differences. Our community safety really does hinge, I think, on our ability to see through our differences and recognize each other's basic humanity. We all care about the future of our children. Our schools have become community centers, and I think they're good places to start these connections and conversations. When the fires happened, Clackamas Community College, as you know, opened its campus to firefighters and evacuees. Our districts, our school districts' food service helped with feeding, and our bus drivers helped evacuate vulnerable seniors. Likewise, with the ice storms, our high school opened as a warming shelter, feeding station, and power sources for people with no power. A place to shower also. As these weather events increase, our schools will find themselves more and more often in these roles, I think. We saw with the pandemic the depth of need in the hardest-hit pockets of our district. We saw how vulnerable some families became without the routine services and supports provided when education is provided in brick-and-mortar buildings. Our recent bond development with the two middle schools is a great start. They're seismically safer and environmentally efficient. They also have built in fantastic community meeting areas. All of our schools need these upgrades. These improvements aren't cheap, but they're critical. Adequate funding is always an issue. I don't believe that the quality of a student's education should be determined by their zip code, but in many ways it is. When incomes are reduced and the economy suffers, so does our school funding. Neighboring communities with more resources, with more buildings, who can offer their teachers higher salaries, have had an easier time finding the space and the staffing to bring more students back into the schools during the pandemics. I'm not sure everybody really understands that relationship. So many of the logistical problems with fully returning students to school while observing the pandemic, safety guidelines come down to school funding. We have a lot of work to do as a society to really prioritize our children and their futures. So that's no answers, but just some thoughts on the question.
Our next question is, what does diversity, equity, and inclusion look like in the Oregon City School District? And what steps would you take to address diversity, equity, and inclusion?
I believe that diversity improves critical thinking skills, builds empathy, and encourages students to think differently. One of the reasons children go to school is to prepare them for adulthood. So teaching must effectively address and embrace the realities that come from living and working in diverse school, community, and country. From my understanding, Oregon City is making some very good commitments to diversity, equity, and inclusion trainings for the students and the teachers. I see it in their assignments, in the elementary school curriculum that my child brings home. This excites me so very much. The changes being made in the design and upgrades to the schools towards gender-inclusive options, the creation of the No Place for Hate curriculum, and the health curriculum, having such expanded topics including LGBTQ population. A couple additional thoughts I have include continued support for teacher trainings, support outreach opportunities that go beyond day-to-day empathy. For the students, help find ways to assist and inspire their communities, be willing to address inequality, connect with parents and community, and meet diverse learning needs. Ensuring that the newest adaptive technologies are available for students with learning disabilities. At the end of the day, the goal is to provide as many different ways for the students to feel connected to their learning, to their spaces, to their community, and to each other.
So I've seen a lot of progress in this area over the last several years, and we have a long way to go. If my neighborhood is any example, our community is diversifying rapidly. These new families have to be made to feel more welcome than mine was when we first moved here. I've been working on that from the board. We, just for a couple of examples, we struck down the policy that required our buildings to be named for pioneers on the grounds that it was too ethnically restrictive a criteria. And a renaming committee is now considering BIPOC and Native Landmarks and the renaming of Ogden. On that committee is a native man named Jeffrey Roth, who went to Ogden in his youth and very poignantly talked about how it felt to go to school every day in a building named for a man who, whatever his accomplishments as a pioneer might have been, he was also known for the brutal murder of an indigenous man. Trans and LGBTQ youth have been amongst the highest, have amongst the highest suicide rates, especially when they're not supported by adults in their lives. The new Gardner and renovated Ogden include all-gender restrooms and locker room options for students who don't fit a binary construct. They'll now be able to use the restroom without being questioned or challenged. These improvements will literally save lives. And for students who prefer a binary restroom situation, those options are still available. We brought in No Place for Hate, the No Place for Hate curriculum. My daughter was in the first wave of that program at Ogden and was in a group of students who presented to the board. It was one of the most inspirational presentations I've ever seen. The kids were confident and passionate and full of hope for an inclusive future. They presented themselves as equity leaders, and it was just, it made me want to cry. It was just so wonderful. Last month, our district initiated the use of Spanish-language interpreters so that our Latinx families can participate. Huge progress. I'm currently talking to the school administration about two projects I'd like to see the district tackle over the summer. I'm trying to set it up so that if I don't get elected, they can carry on without me. One project is something called Hello Neighbor, and it's the brainchild of an artist named Julie Keef. It's a photo-voice project that teaches students interviewing techniques and how to use cameras. They interview each other around a central theme, and in this case, it would probably be something like diversity, and then photograph each other. And then the resulting images can be blown up and displayed in the schools as art. The other project is something that came from an email with a parent who spoke at a board meeting and wasn't happy with the format, and I completely agree with her about the format, by the way. We've been talking about doing a series of videos where students can showcase what they know about their family histories, include old photographs and family stories, interview parents and grandparents. It's really in the concept phase right now, but the superintendent is enthusiastic and the parent is all-in to help with that, too. So if I don't get elected, these are some projects that I'd really like to volunteer on.
So equity means the quality of being fair and impartial. Diversity is ensuring that everyone has an equal opportunity to contribute and influence every part to ensure that everybody feels safe. I come back to the word balance, a condition in which different elements are equal and in correct proportions. I personally think that we as a school district are making progress in a very complex and very real situation. I do believe we need to remember to look at what we have in common to be able to find unity in discussions rather than focus on the differences that we have, which tend to create more of a divide. I plan on bringing balance to the school board by maintaining my nonpartisan stance that politics absolutely do not belong in a school board. I pledge to listen and listen again. I pledge to support, encourage, and embrace all views moving forward.
Our next question is, how will you reach out to the community for input and work with others?
So this has been a big topic, I think, in this election. And ironically, since the pandemic, the board meetings have been better attended, and the board has received an increase in patron input. I think that's because it's simply easier on Zoom. We've also received more complaints about the input process. I think it takes a lot of courage to stand in public and speak for three minutes, and it's demoralizing to then get no response from the board. Unfortunately, that's standard public meeting process. Personally, I think that this process itself is a biased process and discourages people who have been marginalized from getting up and speaking their truth. It's extremely unwelcoming. That's why the district holds listening sessions and community meetings, as well as the board patron input. I've been to two meetings, two such meetings in my capacity on the board that stand out. I've been to many other ones, but these are the two that stand out. One was a group of Spanish-speaking parents moderated by our wonderful TOSA, Laney Morlock. These parents, mothers actually spoke very emotionally, elegantly about how difficult it is to navigate our school system in the best of times. Not even, you know, not even with the pandemic to consider. What particularly impressed me was how they'd created a network of families who helped each other navigate the district. They talked about how difficult high school credit and forecasting, and the forecasting system was to understand, if you're not from this country, and how hard it is to figure out the college application system. They made some great suggestions about how they might volunteer to help other families for whom English is not their first language and who came from countries very different, with very different school systems. This experience reminded me of the NAMI Family-to-Family Support System, and NAMI is National Alliance on Mental Illness. In the family-to-family system, experienced families hold a series of educational meetings, and it's manualized, so there are topic areas, and they have a meal together once a week. But they hold a series of educational meetings to help newer families navigate the mental health system. These families form support networks that would last for years. I'd love to see our district facilitate a system like that for families with specific needs, like families with differently-able children, or LGBTQ families, families of color, other families that might have some affinity with each other. And these groups allow people to come forth with a stronger voice, I think, as well. The second impactful listening session I was in, I was invited by the county to participate because I was on the board, was a group of mothers talking about their experiences with law enforcement and their children. This was a group of white mothers with white children, mothers of color, black and white children with, sorry, black and white mothers with children of color, mothers working in law enforcement and in the juvenile justice setting. The group was facilitated by a county mediator named Martine Koblenz. I am not sure that I've ever had the privilege of participating in anything that was quite as powerful as that listening session was. And that's the kind of thing I think we need more of. I think that facilitates input and facilitates discussion and helps us see each other's humanity.
I love working with the community. I promise to return emails or phone calls. I would love to see interaction returned to the school board, question-and-answer dialogues. I want this community to know that I am here and I am ready to listen and to stand up for their children. Every one of this in this community has a story. Not all of our stories are beautiful, and not all of our stories are sad, but each of us has a role in this story of our community, our schools, and our children. I'm a very well-rounded person with many experiences. I work really well with others, and I bring in many years of working with children and parents in my childcare business. I am approachable and always willing to learn.
I'm willing to consider and respect experiences that are unlike my own. I plan to utilize a combination of channels for communications. I believe maintaining my campaign and personal Facebook will link me to many members of the community, but also continue to enjoy many other pages such as Oregon City United will help keep keeping me updated to the community's concerns. I hope to continue coaching, which connects me to so many of our families in the community through both practices and games. I believe as we rise up after the pandemic, I can potentially host some virtual hours or coffee chat meetups to allow the community another connection point. Lastly, I plan to make every effort to continue to attend many of the Oregon City events and engage at them, offering the opportunity to be a sounding board and a conduit to our community, delivering their message to the entire board. Of course, as I will be new to the board position, I believe I'll learn even more opportunities as in how I can connect with our community.
Going to move on to our second-to-last question. What is your favorite memory from when you were in school?
This one took me back. My favorite memory was probably in high school. See, I had a mother who was an addict. I grew up in poverty. I grew up living on government cheese. I grew up not knowing where my next meal was coming from. In high school, I tended to shy away because I didn't have the coolest clothes, and I didn't know how to interact with people. I had to take an animal science class to graduate from high school, Candy High School, and that teacher, Mr. Sherman, saw through my exterior. He saw that I had something there that needed to be brought out and shown. He talked me into raising a pig, and I had to care for that pig, groom that pig, feed that pig, and train that pig. My very first year, my sophomore year, I went to the Clackamas County Fair. I was so poor, I had to borrow an FFA jacket because I didn't have the funds to buy my own. Once I got into that ring, all the fear, all the anxiety, and everything came to the surface, and he said, "You got this. You can do this." Through all of that, I shone. My pig and I were granted the Junior Novice Championship Award. My teacher jumped over the fence, grabbed me, and celebrated with me. My goal in raising my children is I want kids to know that there's that one teacher that can look past them and see them and give them that light to shine.
So honestly, it's the hot rolls that came with our school lunches. I was just literally chatting with my wife the other day of how no roll has ever compared to those hot buttery rolls we used to get with our school lunches. But the more we discussed it, it was how school lunches brought families like mine through those struggling times, and so many families do. It's funny how a lunch can create such a positive memory out of consistency. It really provided some security to my day, knowing that that was something I could look forward to. These simple cafeteria lunches continued to develop me later in my school career. I volunteered in the cafeteria lunch program and got to work alongside staff and students. I think those experiences helped me develop my outgoing personality and humbled me simultaneously. But honestly, those fluffy, buttery rolls were just amazing.
This is my really short answer, and it came to me immediately. My favorite memory was when my high school history teacher, whose name was Mr. Hubert, jumped up on his desk to wake us up during the middle of one of his classes, and he started in on a Groucho Marx imitation. He said, "Do you know how to make ice water?" And then he looked around and he said, "Cut an onion." And he had us all laughing. It was, he made it very fun, and we were all engaged again after that. And I think what a difference a great teacher can make. And having said that and remembering Mr. Hubert, I want to give a shout-out to Mr. K., who's a fourth-grade teacher in Beaver Creek, who was exactly that teacher for our daughter.
And our last question is, what else would you like our community to know about you?
That I'm not a politician. My wardrobe honestly contains a consistent theme of cargo shorts and dry-fit shirts. My day starts with waking up my two young boys every morning and trying to infuse positivity and flexibility from the get-go. We often discuss the importance of not embracing fear or anger, instead taking deep breaths and follow your own unwritten path. My wife and I try to inspire by building people up and reducing preconceived stereotypes. I definitely appreciate that this next generation are already showing how much more galvanized and united they are than my generation. It gives me so much hope.
I've just told the community more about me than I probably have ever said, but I'll continue. I grew up in a foreign service family. We moved around a lot. I went to nine different schools during my K-12 experience, which is a lot. When I went to college, my family moved to Turkey and then on to Pakistan. My upbringing was a rich experience, and it taught me a lot about appreciating and navigating other cultures. It also gave me appreciation for my family, we're very close. My mother's family came from a small town in Vermont, very, which is a state, I think, very much like Oregon. When my parents retired to Vermont, they became integral parts of their community through volunteering and civic involvement. I've worked in Clackamas County for almost 30 years and have lived in Oregon City almost 16 of those. This is the longest I've ever lived in any one place, and this community has become deeply important to me. The role of the school board is not to micromanage the district. It's to set priorities and vision, to ensure fiscal stability and to make sure our policies and procedures are consistent with our mission and values. I take this responsibility very seriously. My ethical standards are very high, as anyone who has known me over the years would attest. I make mistakes and I take responsibility for them. Like everyone else, I have political viewpoints, and it would be naive to think otherwise. But when it comes to leading from the board, I am nonpartisan and will continue to welcome and include all perspectives. Nonpartisan public service is in my DNA. I've spent 25 years at the county developing low barrier and accessible options for people in mental health crisis. During those years, I've partnered with many other professionals and organizations in service of this mission. Now, as Executive Director of Clackamas Volunteers in Medicine, I help bring medical care to low-income, uninsured, working families who have no other resources. Doesn't matter what their politics are. I am grateful for the long and diverse list of public servants who have endorsed me in this race. I am grateful for the long and diverse list of public servants who have endorsed me in this race. And um I guess finally, I just want to thank Unite Oregon City for the, for the opportunity to share some of myself.
I would like my community to know that I am reliable. I will always be ready for this job. I am resourceful. I am always looking outside the box for different perspectives. I am ready. I am ready to make a difference. My children are grown, and my last one's a sophomore in high school. And I am real. I have so many changing stories of my life. I wear my heart on my sleeve, and I can bring in real balance to this school board and represent the community, the teachers, the families, and most of all, represent these children.